Councilmember Johnny Simpson is absent. Councilwoman Jenna Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Mayor Skipper.
Here.
Brantley.
Here.
Councilmember Schick.
Here.
Councilmember Linton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We move on to item two, a public hearing and actual items from public hearing. Item two A, conduct a public hearing concerning the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. And I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Mayor, council, thank you very much this evening. We have our required public hearing for the evening. Big things I wanted to go over with you guys, I know we've had an opportunity since we presented the budget back in July, at least the city manager's proposed budget. One of the big things that I want to just kind of go over a few highlights. And also, we have one item that I think is still kind of up in the air and we can decide here this evening, kind of how we want to go about handling that. But our current tax rate in the city of Dickinson is thirty-eight point eight one three nine cents per one hundred. And what we have proposed is the no new revenue rate, which is thirty-six point six eight seven zero per one hundred. If you take an average home value in the city of Dickinson, it's about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is your average homestead taxable value. In that situation, the tax bill at the no new revenue rate is eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. With this budget that currently shows a no new revenue rate, our overall budget on revenue is going to be, at least see a sales tax decrease of about sixteen percent. And that's largely due to a three eighty agreement that went out with Archrock. Our property tax certified tax rules will be looking at about two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars in largely because of collections and some dealing with the difference between the no new revenue rate and with growth, you know, being calculated in. Our license and permits is one area that was an area that we have seen a decrease and largely because of the renovations post Harvey. And then, of course, a lot of people took on home projects during COVID. And so, we want to adjust our budget accordingly. On the positive side, our interest income, because of the interest rates going up, is going up pretty exponentially, about a seven hundred and sixteen percent increase in interest income, or about two hundred and fifteen thousand increase there. One of the big things that you're going to, that affected the bottom line of our budget is that we finished up the Gumbayu project. And so, we had received all this intergovernmental transfer funding. We've expended that to do the Gumbayu project. And so, until the next set of grants begin coming in, and we do have a few online coming, especially the Hughes Road project, then you'll start seeing that intergovernmental side go up as well. The, one of the big things I wanted to go over with you guys this evening is going to come up is dealing with how do we want to deal with merit and COLA increases and so forth. Before we get into that, I did want to bring up that we have done some pretty significant things in this past year. One of the big, biggest ones has to do with our health coverage with the city. A lot of the work that we've done over the last three budget cycles has been to lower the cost of health insurance and providing more affordable options for health insurance. And another big one is that we were able to lock in a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the police department. And now, we're in the second year of that as well. Another big part of, you know, helping the employees in our employee policy and in our budget is instituting tuition reimbursement as another benefit to employees as well. So, I say all of that to bring you to where we are right now. What we have put together in this budget right now is between COLA and merit, a five percent increase, assuming you get the full merit, three percent COLA, two percent merit. The budget impact on that is about four hundred forty-six thousand dollars. If you were to do three, four, five percent, you know, you'll see the breakdown of three hundred fifty-seven thousand and two sixty-eight at three percent, or basically about eighty-nine thousand dollars per percent. And I've heard quite a few different ideologies, philosophies on how y'all would like to deal with it, what percentage and so forth. But what is in the budget is five percent. How you split it could be anyway, or if it doesn't need to be five percent, or y'all feel four percent or three percent, you know, it's based on eighty, about eighty-nine thousand per percent. So, I would like to open it up to you guys as we're kind of discussing.
Well, so we can't do that. We have to do an item two B, I think, correct? So, this is the public hearing portion still. Okay. Because we do have two people signed up to speak on the public hearing portion. The first one is Wally Dietz.
Is this on? Okay. Wally Dietz, fifty-two oh one Dussel Drive, Dickinson, Texas. I wanted to address council on just a couple of things. First of all, I was looking, traditionally, there's been an executive summary that was included with the budget document as part of your packet, but I didn't see that until I got here today. And then, I saw this on the table outside. Is this the executive summary for what the budget, like budget highlights?
Yes, sir. It was basically taking what Harrison had normally done without graphics and tried to put some graphic and make it a little more eye catching so you could, you know.
I also wanted to voice a concern that there, you know, as you stated, I don't know when in July, council got a copy of the draft budget, but it wasn't ever workshopped. And I see on tonight's agenda, it's up for approval. So, it begs the question, is how much input did council really have, you know, prior to this and into that budget? That's, that's a concern. The other thing is, it looks like to me that the public works budget has been severely cut. I don't see any room for any streets being reconstructed or constructed in that budget. That's a real concern, especially in light of, you know, we have a, I know you guys don't have direct control over the management district, but you do have influence. And I, that management district was farmed in order to supplement capital purchases for the city. But it's, seems like lately, it's been drifting away from that. The latest one was eighty thousand dollars given to a League City youth program. Not sure what they were thinking there or how it benefited the people of Dickinson. But, you know, the, there, my point is that there is money out there that, that could potentially be used to do streets. And I know some of you are new to council. You weren't on council when Harvey hit, but we are still recovering from Harvey. And one of the things we learned from that was that, you know, we do need to maintain, you know, our, our ditches. In fact, we had to do some major catch-up just to, you know, get where we are today. We can't afford to let that slip. And I don't see money in this budget to do it. Another thing that, and the people that are up and down the bio regularly, we were starting to see some very large trees, especially, and I can think of at least five right now, especially since the drought, I think we've had, you know, some effect on some of these trees. But we want to make sure that, I think the commitment was every couple of years, we would do a, you know, a clean out on debris out of that bio. We're just now getting into the fat part of hurricane season. So, it may be a little late for, for right now. But I don't think there's any money in here to do, to do that in the upcoming year before next hurricane season.
The three minutes is up.
So, you want me to stop?
Please. Next, we have Tammy Steenbarger.
Good afternoon. My name's Tammy Steenbarger, fifty-one oh nine Casa Grande. I don't know much about budgets, but I just have a question. We, we keep moving forward in all these years budgets, but are we really clear on where we're at? I, the city manager said in May that you were wrapping up the twenty twenty-one audit and that you would present it to council in June. Well, I mean, that, you can go back and listen to the, it's on recording, or that it should be presented by June. And now, we're, we don't have a twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. So, are these numbers accurate? I don't know, because I don't know anything about budgets. But just wondering, when, when can we expect those audits to, to get them? What?
For your, I mean, we're not, the audit is not on the budget.
No, I'm asking, but are these numbers?
We can't, we can't interact with you while you speak. It's on that agenda.
Oh, okay.
All right. That's all we have, comments for the public hearing. So, we move on to item two B. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas approving and adopting a budget for the city of Dickinson, Texas for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, making appropriations for the city for such fiscal year as reflected in said budget, providing for the incorporation of preamble, making certain findings and containing certain provisions related to the subject and providing an effective date. This will be the first and final reading. So, a motion to, okay. A motion approved by Councilman Brantley. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Linton. Any discussion?
I'd just like to mention that I spent, last time was my first budget to go over. And this is definitely not my area of expertise, but I got my Google PhD and did what I could. I also set up meetings with the city manager and with Harrison before he left. Last time, I spent approximately thirty to forty hours. This time, I spent about fifty hours going over it. Talked to some of the department heads and was able to whittle it down to one meeting with the city manager and Harrison. I had all of my questions answered. Some of the concerns that were mentioned earlier, I had some of the same concerns. There's rational and reasonable and financially sound explanations for that, at least in my opinion. So, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, you know, I once again did my homework.
And also, we did have, so Wally and Tammy, I know you both signed up for this item as well. Did you have something like separate on this one, or?
Not really.
Okay. If you'd like, you could.
Yeah, really, I wasn't sure, you know.
No, I understand. Well, I mean, you signed up for both of them, so it, yeah.
So, he was going to do his thing and, which was helpful, you know, on the summary. Where I left off was that we have other resources that could help, you know, supplement our budget. However, you know, we, we really have to watch things like spending the inordinate amount of money on a red, another red, white and bio. And, you know, here again, the EDC voted last night to add a line item to their budget for a hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees. And I guess there's money in the budget for attorney's fees from the city's part of that too, right? You can't interact. Those are my concerns.
Okay, understood. And Tammy, you also had, you had been on this item as, as well. You're good. Okay, thank you. I know, I know, I can just couple of those things, and I think Theo can as well. Actually, Theo, you want to, you want to take some of that?
Yeah, sure. I don't have a problem. So, one of the big things that, and I know Alexis and can speak to this, one of the big things that we're kind of focusing in on this year, especially in public works, is culvert maintenance. One of the big things that hit us in the current year was we had a major drainage failure in the Cheyenne subdivision that really knocked out a huge portion of discretionary funds for us, you know, this year. So, one of the things that we're trying to do is to make sure we kind of stockpile some funding so that we don't get caught like that again. We had, you know, basically nearly a road collapse issue because of the culvert there, the culverts there. Another area that we're focusing in on, colonial estates, we had a major, major collapse. And so, you know, one of the big things we are trying to do is trying to in-house some of this work. I know that we have kind of historically contracted for a lot of stuff, but, you know, we have beefed up the staff and trying to in-house some of it. So, what you'll see in culvert maintenance and especially ditch maintenance is going to be a lot more on the in-house side, you know, using the staff we have and the equipment. We, we did get the marsh master that, you know, I believe Councilman Dietz and Deckery all were both help, were instrumental in getting the funding and helping us get that. But it took almost a year to get the marsh master, unfortunately. And so, we just finally got it a few weeks ago, and I believe it's working quite well. So, I think what you'll see is that some of it's going to be a lot more in-house work in regard to streets. I think one of the big things that we're coming up to is that we are really working very closely right now with the county on the resurfacing of the California Street project that's, that was bonded out by the county, I think, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty range. And so, our contribution debt is going to be a one million dollar contribution. And that was agreed upon with prior administration and council. So, that's about to come due for us to be a part of that. And so, that's going to be kind of, you know, some of our focus over the next about two, two budget cycles. But, but to your point, I think there will be some coordination over time with our, with our sister entities as well. So, but I did want you to know, some of this year is really in-house culvert and drainage maintenance. And I'll, I'll look at that de-snag and see if there's some de-snagging opportunities for us in this year as well.
Additionally, I was going to add, the reason for the decrease in the revenue of it had to do primarily with Archrock ending that three eighty. And so, we have to pay back the rebate part of the, that three eighty, even though we're not receiving the revenue. So, unfortunately, we're going to have to wind that down, and so, it will cause a problem. But I do kind of echo what Theo said. I think we have those things coming. And then, also this past year, some of the, the streets that were really problematic, like Caroline, have been, have been redone, other streets as well, some of the work you're seeing right around this area. So, there's been quite a bit of progress as compared to some other years. And unfortunately, yeah, for primarily due to Archrock, it'll have to slow down for a little bit, but it doesn't mean that we, we can't do anything and we don't have things kind of in the hopper, so.
Right. And if I can also, you know, address, you know, a question about the audit as well. So, and Harrison and Sarah, Sarah is our interim finance director, have worked extremely hard with, with our audit firm, Belt Harris. If y'all remember, that budget year, or budget year that was being audited was kind of in that transition time where I think Joe Dixon had a portion of it. I'm on the last three months of it. So, one of the things that we're working on right now, and I think is pretty much, at least as far as I know of, of a status from yesterday, is that the outstanding item we have left is just a reconciliation of the accounts payable, which is a much smaller deal than the, the bank accounts themselves. Those have all been done and turned over. So, we were trying to get the schedule we were talking about doing was trying to have something done. The first one being done, we wanted it to be either August or September. Belt Harris said they'll probably be coming in October. We, if we can get that October audit done, then Brooks Watson, who has been retained for the next five years, will be taking over the twenty-two and twenty-three audits. And the goal is have those presented, one before the end of this year, which would be twenty-two, and then for FY twenty-three, to be back on schedule with, with, when audits should be presented, which would be around March to April. So, once we have that, but yes, we, we should be, we should have been presenting an audit either this month or the previous month, but we had to get some reconciliations finished up. And now, we're turning over the AP reconciliation very soon, and they should be coming to present.
Are there other, other questions or comments from Council, Councilman Townsend?
Theo hit on it earlier. We've discussed it. In fact, we discussed it yesterday morning on the pay raises. I'd like to go with a flat four percent, straight across the board for everybody and get rid of the merit raises. I don't like merit raises. I understand what they're for. I've had them myself. I don't like them. I'd like to go with a straight four percent for everybody, considering the economic market out there, and it doesn't include a tax increase to do it. So, just give everybody four percent, be done with it.
So, Mark, I just want to clarify. So, it's, the budget said five percent. Are you wanting to do below the five percent?
Five percent. Everybody's get, my understanding is everybody gets three.
Right.
But there's up to five percent. So, they, a supervisor could give a person four percent, they could give them five percent, or they could give them none and leave them at three. I just want to give everybody across the board, four percent and do away with the, the.
The merit part, okay.
The merit part of it, just straight four percent.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, or Councilman Schick?
I'd like to echo that. I think a straight four percent is probably what this city needs here. It's something we can bank on. And again, merit raises to me are, have, have been problematic in the past.
I did want to ask, would we be able to do a five percent COLA? Or would that not work because of how, because I think, or we're assuming not everybody would get a merit raise, I'm assuming, so.
It really wouldn't have a budget impact between the four and the five percent because the way that we were kind of expecting that the vast, vast majority of the staff would get the full five percent, you know, you know, I mean, to be honest, you know, I think, you know, it's, you know, I think, I just, you know, both Harrison and I were both in agreement that historically in our careers, we've seen that normally department heads, it usually ends up with the full merit increase for most. So, we kind of budgeted it to where it's almost pretty much budget neutral whether you do it either way.
So, my proposal would be, and largely due to the inflation, it's so, it's been so bad as to, if we have five percent in there and it's not a, you know, there's no tax increase associated, I would, I would advocate for that.
Across the board, no merit.
Correct, correct. Councilman Brantley, you look like you have a thought. You don't? Okay.
No, I, I can agree with that.
Well, you have thoughts, but you just, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I can agree with that. I originally had a thought, but after thinking about my thought, I, I think I, I can agree with five percent across the board.
Five percent for everybody is already built in.
Yes.
I didn't mean to catch you with the mouth.
Yeah, yes. Are we, I mean, so there have been four percent, so Mark, are you?
I think it, I think under the economic deal with the way people are being hurt, the taxpayers that have to pay the bill, I think it's four percent would be fairer to them. But to the employees, I'm standing five percent is the fair way to them, but you've got to look at it from the guy that's footing the bill.
And I'd agree with you.
I'm with five, but I think four puts you right in the middle, and it does away with the merit raises, because I don't like them. I don't, I've received them, but I don't like them.
For me, the, the five percent, I'm okay with that simply because this, we're not doing a tax increase. So, we're keeping everything static, so that's kind of where I'm coming from. But yeah, I would agree. I think for me, if it was a case where we would have to also raise taxes in order to do it, I think that'd be more problematic. But are there other, Bill, I know you had been for four percent, so what are your?
I, I still would like to, I'd still like to stay with the four percent. I'm comfortable there. I believe the five percent was an increase. I believe we discussed that.
Yeah, so theoretically, you'd have a little bit of an increase, but truth be told is we have several vacancies. I mean, like, you know, at any given time in the year, so it wouldn't like change your budget. So, we wouldn't change a budget number here, because like I said, even as of right now, we have vacancies. So, the real question becomes, you know, this is pretty much baked in and can handle it. And, and whatever fluctuations you have, your fund balance is going to stay somewhere in that seventy thousand range, you know, changing in net position either way because of that. Because we, we budget extremely conservatively on it. What I mean by that is, is we assume every position is filled every single day all year long. So, that's where we're basing all of our calculations on. So, that in and of itself is baked in with a ton of ability to say, okay, if you want to do the, you know, set it up with that, you know, say a one percent more, or excuse me, go five percent COLA versus the three-two split, it really just ends up being a wash in that sense. So, that, but to your, to your point, it'd be about, you know, theoretically, if every person worked every day and every position was filled, it would be about twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand difference in that number.
And kind of what you're saying is kind of another concern I have with that is I know, like, for police, for instance, and EMS, we had, we added positions and we're, just due to the labor market, we've been unable to fill those. And part of me thinking too with inflation where it is, that being a little robust about having a more, the five percent COLA, I think that helps us. It's certainly not going to hurt us with recruiting, is where we're having trouble. I know where's Chief Bear's and where are you at? I know I've talked to you, you know, a few times about what are we doing to try to fill these positions? And you've, and it's not just us. I mean, it's a problem everywhere, right? But so for me, it's also for a recruitment kind of retention issue as well to, if we can do it and it's budget neutral, that, that's kind of my thought. You don't, I don't necessarily have to say anything if you don't want to, I just. Okay.
Point two, if I understand, if I remember correctly, we took two positions out for EMS. Under, if I can remember correctly, you took out two, two EMS positions this year because you couldn't fill them.
Yeah, correct. So, what we did was we did some, what we did with those was try to bake in these numbers, hoping that what we do is, okay, well, if we get the, the salaries up enough, then we'll fill, maybe we don't, we can't, because right now, we can't fill the, all the paramedic positions and we can't fill all of the patrol positions. So, let's scale back a little bit, raise the pay. So, like, that's why I'm saying like the COLA between four and five percent, you know, is, I guess it's going to depend on what you want to do. Do you want to, you know, try to work on filling the roles that we have and then coming back mid-year? You know, we, our sales taxes are already probably projecting better than what we have actually in this budget. You know, that was one of our last conversations Harrison and I had, is that the local economy is relatively strong right now, picking up some of the slack on the Archrock deal. But the issue is, is that, you know, I guess it just depends on the philosophy of council is that, you know, we took out a couple of positions. Okay, well, if we kind of get these COLAs up and get pay where it needs to be, then let's fill those and then come back at the mid-year. And that was one of the promises made to Chief Bear's and say, hey, if we can fill the roles that are left, come back to me and let's get, and let's get that recruitment plan up and, and let's work on the mid-year adjustment to put in positions for both paramedics and patrol. So, yes, sir, you are correct.
And, and my thinking on it is that we can't get paramedics, but we could still hire, and I discussed this with Theo and the, with the city administrator and with Derek, we could hire EMTs. And as long as you got a paramedic on that ambulance and an EMT, you can still run, it doesn't affect the, the rating on the ambulance. So, if you're having trouble hiring paramedics, at least we could hire an EMT, and it still gives us two medics and we can get that second box on the street without having to call for help from Texas City, Santa Fe and Galveston County EMS all the time.
Councilman Lynn?
The only question I have is the, the argument seems to be, or the suggestion is the advantages and disadvantages of a merit increase. It seems to me, the only argument I can see for merit increase would be to allow the department heads to have some sort of, you know, performance-based, you know, award for, for their employees. Gives them something to, you know, to strive for. I also see the disadvantages. I'm not used to merit raises, but myself with my job. But that is the only argument for. Is there something that we lose there, allowing the department heads to, you know, provide more of a raise to employees that excel more than others? I mean, do we lose something there?
I mean, I guess my.
The management mechanism, you know.
You're looking at me as you ask, so I guess, I know you don't necessarily mean me. My thought would be that I, just would, particularly how the economy is, that I would more say that maybe more robust COLAs.
So, just a flat raise.
That would be my, my thought. We do need to, so if we don't do anything, the budget is just going to go through with the three and the two. So, we do need someone to make a motion to amend the budget in some way with regards to this.
Theo, and sorry for the redundancy if you explained this and I didn't understand it earlier, but when you build the, the budget performa, right, do you build that, so assuming that you build it based on assumption that all spots are filled, right? So, when you build the salary in each department, is that built in? What, what, you built that with the three and the two? So, you build that with a five percent increase? So, that's how the budget's built?
Yes, it's built with the five percent and to Councilmember Schick's point, there is a, you know, there is going to be a change because whenever you factor in, you know, you have to factor in a little variability, there'll be a small number. You know, historically, you don't really. You know, historically, you don't really see department heads, uh, issuing out a lot of zeros and one, like in this scenario, you'd have like zero, one and two percent increases. Like you're not going to see a bunch of zeros and ones. You're going to see a lot of two percent increases. And so what Harrison, you know, really built was, uh, putting in a little bit of variability and that variability going from say a three percent to and two percent split to say the five percent, which is, you know, I guess would, would be the most equivalent is about assuming every single person, every single position is filled and every day, all day, it's, it's filled would be about a twenty-eight thousand dollar difference in the budget. And what I was explaining was is that we wouldn't have to change the numbers in the budget because the, on day one, on October one, that's not going to be a reality. But we want to, we want to make sure that we have enough money to ensure that we have payroll and AP and all that done. So it's not going to change a number in the budget. It's just, just know that that is kind of a baked in number that would, that would fluctuate in the year because of the ability of a department head to give a one or a zero and not two, all, every single one of them getting a two.
I'll make a motion to amend the budget to include a five percent COLA increase across the board.
There's a motion to amend, uh, the budget to, I'll operate, I'm sorry, I'm mic on. There's a motion to amend the budget for a five percent, uh, cross board COLA. Is there a second? There's a second by Councilwoman Simpson. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing now will take this to a vote. And we don't have to roll call this one, correct? This is just to amend, have it be a five percent COLA. Correct. Yeah, we'll have to roll call the budget, but this we do not have to roll call. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So now we're back to item two B as amended. Are there any other comments or questions on, on the budget? Okay, hearing now, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Councilman Brantley?
Get my thoughts together. I wanted to address a couple of things that, uh, former Councilman Dietz brought up. And that was, uh, I know we didn't have a workshop. I will say that, uh, I was able to spend about four hours all together with Theo individually on the budget. So I appreciated his time in that. And then also, um, one of the things that popped out to me that obviously popped out to you as well is the public works budget. But then in reviewing that, um, a lot of the public works was moved to the street maintenance fund, which seems like it made a little more sense since that's where the money comes from. So I wanted to address that because I asked the same question, so.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing now will need to roll call vote this, so, um, we'll start with, uh, Councilwoman Simpson.
Aye.
No.
Councilman Brantley?
Aye.
Councilman Shick?
No.
Councilman Linton?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the motion carries. All right. We'll move on to item two C, consideration and possible action concerning the ratification of the increased property tax revenue reflected in the FY twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four adopted budget. There's a.
I thought we couldn't do that tonight. Two C.
So just for clarity, this is a step in the budget process, even though we're not, we're not adopting the tax rate. To adopt your budget that shows any kind of increase in revenue from tax in your budget, the state law requires you to do this extra step to ratify the tax rate reflected in the budget. You're, I know it's confusing, but you're not adopting the tax rate. It's essentially a, a subsequent act from the budget you just adopted.
That, that'll be at a future meeting. So we had, who, who moved to approve? Uh, Councilman Brantley and there, is there a second? Second by Councilman Linton. Um, is there any discussion? Cause I think we've kind of already covered this, uh, a little bit in the budget itself, correct?
Well, I want to clear something up.
Sure, Councilman Townsend?
When we discussed yesterday, my understanding was two C wouldn't happen today, that you can't do them on the same day. So we had to do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, well, so, uh, then actually, can, uh, excuse me, city attorney, Justin proved, uh, corrected me on that was that this is not to approve it. This is basically us acknowledging that the no new revenue rate generates more than the tax rate of last year, correct? It's not, it's not adoption.
Okay.
It's not adoption.
And even more.
We discussed yesterday.
Correct. You were at, you, because you, when, at the time when we were talking about two C, it was, we, the question was, was, is the tax rate being adopted? And so I was like, well, no, we can't do that because I was, I was already told that had to happen on September twenty-sixth. So I said, no, it can be. But, uh, when I talked with Justin, Justin was like, well, we still have to do an action, but it's, it's only to acknowledge that there is more taxes being generated with this tax rate.
No, that's a good clarification because the process has become a clear as mud due to what the state's done. I mean, so I think you're making a good point that it certainly looks like we're adopting the tax rate, but actually according to Austin, we are not. So, uh, we'll do that at the next meeting. Is there any other discussion on this item? Hearing, and we don't have to roll call vote this one, correct? All right. Hearing no discussion will take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move to item three adjournment. Motion adjourned by Councilman Townsend, second by Councilman Shick. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at six thirty-six PM. So we will have our, uh, next meeting at seven o'clock.